Yes, and then I might cancel probably.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It might just be that I was like.
Well, and to be, and I'm not doing this like toot my own horn, but I've actually lost weight since I.
Call the regular meeting back to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll first move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting, the meeting held January 11th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved second.
Have motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those minutes are approved. I do not believe we had anyone signed up to address the board on non-agenda or agenda items. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda is approved. Now to the good news report.
Good evening. We're here tonight with yet another great example of how our generous community has stepped up with a, to answer a COVID-caused need in our schools. This fall, along with all the physical adjustments we needed to make in our schools to keep our students in session, we also met some challenges with feeding our students. Due to the safety guidelines implemented in the wake of the pandemic, all school-provided snacks are now required to be prepackaged. That means our able child nutrition staff that traditionally would cut up fruit and slice that, make that prepared for students in their snacks, could no longer do that for safety reasons. Higher costs then followed with those prepackaged foods we needed to make. Along with some delivery challenges as one of our suppliers was making a change in our community as well. So we also had to extend our lunch periods to be able to get all of our students into the cafeteria and still spaced out appropriately. After a series of phone calls between the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and the district, we were able to define the actual need and the wheels of progress started turning very quickly after that. When they found out students were sometimes eating before 11:00 a.m. or having to wait till approximately 1:00 p.m. to have their lunches, they recognized that those stomachs would be growling and hungry and unable to focus many times on the schoolwork in front of those students. So they stepped up and quickly went to work looking for funds from our community. Once they found out that there were wonderful partners in our community that wanted to answer this need, things moved very quickly. It came to a total of around $50,000. That came from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and Great Western Bank to provide these healthy snacks for students in 10 Title I elementary schools. Time and again, we have found that our students' needs have been met by kind, compassionate, and always supportive friends at the Community Foundation and Great Western Bank, who've long been partners of the Sioux Falls School District. Patrick Gale and Andy Patterson are here from the Community Foundation along with Mark Swenson and Tom Shields from Great Western Bank. And I would like them to come forward. We have a certificate of appreciation that will provide to the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and Great Western Bank. So please help me thank them and then I'll ask them if they have a word, word to say in the process.
Yeah, my name's Tom Shields. I'm with the Great Western Bank, but my wife was a teacher in the district for 20 years and we understand the difficulties that can come with children and not having the appropriate nutrition and being able to learn during the day. And to be able to do this and just kind of help do our part to enrich our community is something that we're proud to be a part of. So thank you to the Community Foundation for reaching out to us and in partnership with us to make this happen. So thank you all that you do as well. Thank you.
Andy Patterson of the school district. Just want to say quickly, we are blessed by all of you, the work you do to enable our teachers to do what they're doing. There's a heroic lift. Got a couple little ones at one of the schools and just I'm amazed at how hard they're working. And so it was a pleasure for us to help meet a need. And we are so thankful for Great Western Bank and several other donors that stepped up. We live in a great community and it's neat to see a tangible example of banding together. And so keep those ideas coming because there's, I mean, I know there's more needs. So thank you for all that you guys are doing and enabling for our kids.
Thank you. This is a true partnership that, you know, sometimes in this situation, we couldn't even do it ourselves because of the storage issues of the fresh fruit and so forth. We didn't have the refrigeration. Some of the guidelines that we are held to, you could buy different snacks and we, so this worked out great for our title schools. And we all know when we're hangry, we can't study and we aren't maybe the nicest to people. So it solves a couple issues for our students and our staff at our school. So thank you very much.
And kudos to our principals out there who identified the needs. Like when the first call came in, I think I was like, um, let me check into that. I'm not really sure. And then I called out and talked to a couple of the principals at the elementary schools and yeah, yeah. It's, it's been a little bit of a challenge. We've got teachers who are bringing, you know, snacks for kids and that type of thing. We know teachers will dig in their pockets as long as they can to help out their students. And so it was a need that sort of just presented itself and, and they really took hold of it and decided to resolve that need. So we're very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Onto conflicts of interest. There were no new conflicts presented. Onto the consent or approval of the consent agenda, items 12A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 13A, 1 through 3, claims to Stanford Health Care. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved second.
Have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries with three ayes and two abstentions from board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. Onto 13B, claims to Avera McKenon. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved second.
Have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is carries with four votes aye and one abstention from board member Parker. Onto reports of the superintendent, summer programming report. Doctor, please.
Good evening. Tonight I bring to you the summer programming report to talk about all the great things that we're going to have moving forward. It's the end of January and it's hard to believe that we're planning for June, but very exciting opportunities that we'll have for those students in the Sioux Falls School District. The summer programming hits district priority area one, student outcomes, and priority statement one, to provide a rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students, emphasizing growth and reducing the achievement gap. And we have both those opportunities within our summer programming. When we look at the programming, it's going to include opportunities to fill academic gaps, credit recovery, and course acceleration. During the summer of 2021, students in the Sioux Falls District from pre-K through age 20 will have the opportunity to close the gap on their reading and math skills, engage in authentic, hands-on activities, and participate in credit recovery and course acceleration. We'll go through each one of those grade level bands and the different opportunities that we have for students and we'll highlight some new opportunities that we have this year to fill in some of those gaps due to the closure of school last, or the different instruction last, the fourth quarter of last year. So through pre-K through fifth grade, birth-to-three services are provided to infants and toddlers with disabilities. And that's really to help promote developmental growth throughout the summer. And so they, those students still continue to get those services. Ready to start serves incoming kindergarten students who have not had access to or limited exposure to early childhood programming. And they do a pre- and post-assessment to measure that growth during that time. And they really work on targeted skills for five weeks to promote that success as those students enter kindergarten. The next one is the early childhood slash summer head start program. And this is new this summer and it's funded with those COVID-19 relief funds to bridge the gap due to the lost learning during the spring of 2020. And the focus on the instruction is based on our high scope curriculum that we use in the early childhood program and those readiness goals. Summer Academy for the elementary program is a six-week program that will work this year with kindergarten, first, and second grade students to bridge the gap again due to those lost learning during the spring of 2020. We'll use the MAP data to identify those students to help support the need for that summer academy. The morning will be filled with reading and math activities and the afternoon with hands-on rich summer experiences to really promote that educational opportunity for students. It looks different this year as we've expanded it. In the prior years, we've had it in three elementary buildings. We're going to have it in eight title buildings and two non-title buildings this year. And we'll have one east side title or non-title and one west side non-title building. And we're working on identifying those right now. And any student from any elementary can attend those buildings. And so that, again, they'll have to qualify based on those MAP scores. And it'll be kindergarten, first, and second grade students. And we will fill those positions as, or those classrooms as the students are available. So again, looking at having collector sites for buses to pick up the students and bring them to that elementary that's designated as an east side or a west side. English language learners at the elementary level, it's a four-week program. And it's for students that are enrolled in our immersion program. And they really work on those four domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. An extended school year serves students pre-K through 20 and those students that have been identified as eligible through their IEP team, working on regression, recoupment, maintenance of critical life skills and emerging skills. And migrant for elementary is a one-day camp for kindergarten through fifth grade students where they really work on some learning act. where they really work on some learning activities, some STEM-based activities, and they get a kit of supplies to take home, and they can continue on learning throughout the summer. And many of these programs, like I could be in a migrant one-day camp, and I could go also to that elementary academy, or I could be in the EL camp, and then I could go to the summer academy also. So they cross over for students. Middle School looks a little bit different. They get to start exploring at the Career Tech Academy, and we have a morning and an afternoon session for middle schoolers, and the students really work on those different areas of study out there and giving them exposure. And also, they connect with the STC campus where those programs align. The EL program for middle school looks different. Any student that has a WIDA of a 3.0 or lower can attend the two-week summer camp. And then also, they work on those four domains of language acquisition, and then they have opportunities out in the community to help extend that learning experience for them. Migrant students in grades 6 and 7 have the opportunity to go to CTE for two days, and they choose two of five options for a full one-day experience so they can really dig in deep if they want to do culinary arts, or if they want to do welding or home building. And so to give them some of those different experiences in hopes that they'll seek those out when they get into the high school. And Running Start is that sixth-grade transition program for middle schoolers where they establish those connections to that middle school with their teachers, their staff, and get familiar with the building. So those are our middle school programs. And at high school, the Connections Program is the ninth-grade transition. Each school establishes that program to help support the students' learning techniques, high school etiquette, and give them opportunities to be involved. And students can receive a half a elective credit for completing that Connections course. The Running Start and Connections will be really important for our students as they transition into new middle school, but also with the boundary changes and help support that. High school English Language Learners have an opportunity for a variety of courses offered at Lincoln High School in the English Language Development, Personal Finance, Algebra Skills, Health, and Speech. And then Summer Credit Recovery, a Summer Up program, is really meant to help those students that are behind in credits or to get to participate so they are able to move ahead with their cohort. The Summer Up program is completed online coursework and then with the support with the classroom teachers. So that's designated, and then schools really work hard to get those students enrolled in that program. And our high school summer school is intended for all of those students that want to get ahead in credits or catch up in credits for graduation. And most of the courses are offered online, and the tests are proctored out at the CTE Academy. We offer speech, PE, and those two are in-person, and students can enroll and earn those credits throughout the summer. And they can also work on internships throughout the community. And migrant students at high school are offered courses in the face-to-face and online, and their tuition's covered by some grant opportunities. So in summary, the Sioux Falls District is committed to providing educational opportunities for students. The summer programming allows for readiness, experiences, credit recovery, earning, additional credits, maintaining academic and developmental and behavioral goals, and English language acquisition, and opportunities for internships across the community. And I ask that you acknowledge the 2021 summer program report and stand by for questions.
Thank you. You know, especially after the closing of school last March, these summer recovery options are going to be so important for our students and our community to help recover for those students as well as catch them up and hopefully maybe even spring some ahead. With this, you know, with our strategic plan being updated, it will be interesting for us, I think, to look at, do we start looking at different transportation options so that, especially like the high schools, you know, where if they're way out at CTE for those summer schools, do we need to look at different options? And also, do we need to look at night and weekends if they have to have a summer job or something, some things like that? We might need to study as a district that we might need to start being more adapting to do so that we're meeting those needs of those students and allowing them still have that summer job or whatever they need to do to continue going to school and get those things. So I just think these are going to be great, and I'm looking for, I'm really glad we're adding at the elementary school more buildings to this because that will help our district as well. So thank you.
I think it's a great way for us to use those COVID-19 funds to bring our students, you know, give them that boost that some of them may need. I love the variety that's offered to different, you know, pockets of people, but like you said, they can cross over and really get the benefit of multiple different things. We've talked several different times about trying to get our middle school kids maybe engaged more in that CTE aspect. And so it's nice to see that we are incorporating those things into our programs as well so that as they start thinking about what else is out there for me as a high school class or even post-high school, they've maybe been on into the CTE building, and that's not intimidating to them, or they've been on the Southeast Tech campus. And so that's not maybe as fearful to them, having been there already in kind of an organized way. And so I think those are really nice ways to introduce parts of our community to places that they haven't been able to experience before in a way that's meaningful to them as well.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge the 2021 summer programming report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have acknowledged the 2021 summer report. Thank you, Teresa. Two Todd reports now, right?
First report is just a quick one on the second-quarter financial update. You know, when we met with the legislators, our legislators, before sessions started, we kind of went through our COVID budget at that time, and we've talked about that here as well, where we've received additional federal and funding for COVID, and we've pretty much accounted for that with our expenditures, so with our planned expenditures, anyway. So as we look at the materials in front of you, we are halfway through the year. We've spent about 40% of our funds, and that's kind of right on pace with last year. So we look pretty good in the general fund. In the special ed fund, we're even a little bit better off. We're 34, about 35% expended, and we're at 38% in revenues. Now, on the general fund side, our revenues are coming in low. Like many districts, our fall enrollment wasn't as high as we projected, but that COVID money has helped to balance our budget in that regard. We are hoping that the legislature passes a bill to, because the governor has proposed it, to take the money left over that wasn't spent in state aid and give it to the districts that didn't grow what was expected. You know, we don't know, the bill hasn't been introduced yet, and we don't know where that is at. So we won't count our chickens until they're hatched. Like I said, the COVID expenditures are fairly high. We've all gone through those over the last six months, but that extra federal money will be very helpful in that regard. Very early in the budget process for us or the expenditure side, so like I said, and we've only spent 40% of our funds. So we'll get a little more detailed as we go through the next quarter and through the budget process. So I would just stand by for questions. Thanks.
Thank you to Todd and your team because we are getting these extra funds, but they're basically one-time expenditures. So learning how to do those so that it's sustainable within our district going forward because this money won't keep coming forever. So what we know we can rely upon going future, but yet spend this in a thoughtful, process way. And like these summer programs are a great way that we'll be doing to do that because if that money goes away, we can still go back to what we're doing and do that in a good service to our community.
And then just the enrollment by and large is a tricky projection in that so many that could have entered kindergarten have been held back. So make sure there'll be some considerations made at each elementary school and how we adapt to that enrollment gap.
Any other further questions or comments for Todd? Seeing none, do I have a motion to acknowledge the report on the district's FY21 second-quarter financials?
So moved.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We acknowledge that report.
Next step is the legislative update. It's kind of been a slow two weeks since we last talked. We're now tracking nine bills, and two of those we consider key. The bills in front of you that are in black have already been approved by the board. So we'll go through the red ones, and I suppose the dead ones, we won't bother with. It really doesn't matter what our position is on that. So the first item you have there that you haven't seen yet is a key bill. It's House Bill 1050. It'll modify certain publishing requirements in official newspapers. The original bill was, looked to be quite onerous, increasing our expenses by about 50%. That got amended in the House, and we got to delete this item here. It was crossed out, but it didn't get taken out. So then the new bill is about a 2% increase. Will cost the district 2% next year, and then it puts in place a annual increase of up to 2%. Right now, the newspapers will go to the Bureau of Administration and show why they should have that increase. This will just set an increase each year. It also allows newspapers to meet their requirements for their number of printings they have to do online, which is kind of ironic because one of the arguments is people want to read the minutes in the newspapers, but in the actual physical newspaper, but they don't want to necessarily have to print the newspaper on paper. They want to print it online. So we oppose the bill. It'll be an increase in our rates. They're asking to be one of the only vendors that gets an automatic increase each year. They don't have to, you know, show that their expenses are higher or anything like that. They get an automatic increase each year. And then the part about we want, people want to still see that in the paper, but we don't have to print papers. We can print it online seems a little silly. As far as having a third party having our minutes so we can't go in and change them if we wanted to, we would don't. We have a printed copy down here. But I can see that, and we could certainly just file that on the government website. The South Dakota Open, southdakota.gov is out there. If not that, it could be a different one where the local governments don't control it. They file them, and then they're just out there for anybody to see. And we could certainly pay to have a link put online at our official publication saying you can click here to see our minutes. I mean, that would be much cheaper than, you know, several lines of minutes. So we are opposing that and want and suggest that it be a key bill. House Bill 1056 is an act to authorize the designation of Purple Star Schools. We suggest taking no position on that bill. House Bill 1066 would transfer wind energy tax revenue from a school district general fund to capital projects funds. We're suggesting no position on the bill. I think there's some, there's a group that thinks it's a way to get around, that counting that in local effort and the state aid. If that's the case, we would change that position. But if it's just a transfer, which normally isn't allowed from the general fund to the capital fund because it's wind energy, and it has to be put in there so it gets counted for local effort, I don't see that as an issue that we would care about. Senate Bill 45 has died, and we had no position on it. Senate Bill 46 and 49 have already been approved by the board. And Senate Bill 68 is the creation of, I might not have that pronounced right, charter school to apply for sponsorship from any school district or the Department of Education. That bill was up there last year as well. We oppose it. We don't have it as a key bill. However, school districts already have the ability to operate a school in accordance with those essential understandings and standards if they wish. So right now, we have opposed on that bill. That is it. It'll be a longer report next time. I can guarantee that. Are there any questions or proposed changes to any of the positions?
No, I just had a question. If that one does change on the wind transfer credit, would you just bring it back in front of us?
Yeah, right. We'll have changed our position, and then we'll turn that part red and bring it back. Seems okay to me, but I know some other people are wary of it, so.
And thank you for providing information to ASBSD as well, and House Bill 1050 to help with the printing costs because you're right. In today's age where we can access everything on the internet, and that's how most people read things, to then now cause this charge is just ridiculous. I do find Senate Bill 68 interesting. I just don't think this is the way to have, help our Native American students at this point. I think, you know, next month, we are doing a work session on what we're doing in our district with the Native American studies and kind of do a deep dive. I think there's other options, either through the JAG program or, you know, having immersion schools and so forth. I just think opening the Pandora's Box of charter school in our state, especially looking at some of the partners on that bill, I don't think their intentions are to do, they have other intentions for charter schools. So I'm in favor of what their administration is proposing on those.
And I'd just add for the, you know, for the audience or the uninitiated, I know the board knows, but when we have a key bill, we actively lobby for or against it. When it's not key, we still have a position, we may still have a position. And if we're asked by our legislators what we think of it, we'll tell them. If somebody who's one of our partners in education asks for help on it, we, you know, we'll help them lobby it, but we don't actively go out if it's not a key bill and lobby it.
Any other questions or comments for Todd? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the administration's recommendations on this House bill, new House bill and Senate bills?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thanks.
Those are approved. Thank you, Todd. Return to Learn.
We are just about the end of January, which I have said to a few people today is staggering to me that it's already that point in the year. Part of the reason we are here at this point in the year is because of all of the work that our schools and our staff have done to get us to this point. So again, it's a point of celebration that we have made it to the end of our second quarter, and now are heading into third quarter. So I just want to give you an update as we head into third quarter, just some of the things related to our Return to Learn plan. First of all, just for our daily stats today to kind of give you an idea of where we are at this point in time, it's very reflective of the low numbers in our community. We are at 0.12% of our student population right now who are positive with COVID, 1.57% who are in quarantine, which of course is significantly lower when we made some of the changes that we made to our quarantine protocols. For our staff cases, we are at 0.26% positive cases and 0.55% in quarantine. So again, very low numbers, and those numbers have stayed relatively low all year, which is what's allowed us to continue. With that, we've also had the conversation that, you know, things were very interesting and difficult leading up to the start of school. We got used to a lot of different protocols with masking, with spacing, with handwashing, sanitizing, how we're doing activities. And all of those things are things that we have reviewed quarterly and that we continue to look at. But we've also started to say, what is it going to look and feel like as we kind of make our way on the other side of COVID? And I think in some ways, it will be equally complex. And so one of the things that we are starting to think about are spring events. And graduation right now is scheduled. We believe we'll be able to do in-person graduation. I don't think it will need to look virtual like it did last year. We're looking at how that's going to look at the arena where we
We're looking at how that's going to look at the arena where we have it scheduled for right now, what we're going to do for attendance, where we're going to place participants and audience members, and so all of that is under review right now. But we want people to know that we're thinking about that, and that we're going to get those decisions made as soon as possible. We know people are wanting to plan. There are graduation parties to be planned, hopefully still with some consideration for distancing even for those. But we're excited that we're going to be able to plan for graduation this year. Also, there are a lot of other activities that happen in the spring typically, dances, prom, activities with athletics that will change again to those spring sports. And so we are actively working right now with our administrators and our schools to think about what does that look like? And if those activities are in partnership with other organizations, some of it depends on what they are doing or not doing, and some of it is with parent organizations, so all of that is under review right now. Some things we can probably start thinking about and make decisions. Some other things that we're thinking about require maybe us to wait as long as we possibly can. So we're looking at what are cutoff dates where people really need to know for reserving a site, or for making a call about an event maybe happening or not happening, depending on who the participants are. So those things are being considered right now. We want people to know that spring and into the end of the year is very much on the radar, and we'll be sending out some guidance here in the next few weeks, so that people can plan for that. I, I do want to reiterate that the reason why we're still here is because of our diligence in following those protocols. Right now, I don't see anytime soon that we're going to give up things like masks, like hand washing, like spacing, and the protocols that we've done with cleaning, because that's why it's working, and that's why we have these low numbers. So we can't stop doing those things prematurely, otherwise we still may run into some issues that we don't need to have needlessly. And again, it's because of the work of the people in our schools. They have done an outstanding job of keeping things clean and have been doing those things. We know, though, it gets harder. We hear it in our community, you know, with different events and things, we all just need to stay the course. So that's the plan right now for just those basic protocols. Just as an update on vaccination, we know that that is a big question mark across the nation right now. What does that look like here in our state, and what does that look like locally for our school district? We have several different organizations, of course, that are authorized to administer the vaccine. Sanford and Avera and our city health department are the ones that we work with primarily. And one of the things that we know is that it's largely out of our control for when those things are happening. We work with those partners, but they are helping us know when they are ready for us to have our, our staff participate in being vaccinated. So, so far, on December 30th, the city health department provided school nurses with their first dose of vaccine, and if a nurse wasn't able to attend on that day, we were able to make other arrangements for them at another scheduled time, and that was with Sanford as our partner, so that was great. That's kind of, you know, the first, you know, sign of things to come, I think, and we felt good about our nurses, who of course are medical professionals that were in that earlier tier. On January 14th, our schools were notified that our school counselors could begin receiving the vaccine, and they were signed up with Sanford and are currently receiving their vaccines at individually scheduled times. On January 25th, we were notified that our physical, occupational, and speech therapists could begin receiving the vaccine, and we're currently setting up those appointments with Avera to get those groups of folks in. We're asking some questions. We're, like I said, it's kind of out of our control who is indicated in those tiers, but we know we have folks in our schools who work very closely with our students. It might involve more physical contact than some other staff members, so we're looking to see what defines that, and if there are ways to get those people who have closer, more frequent physical contact with kids in this next group. We don't know if that'll work or not, but we're certainly going to check into it. On January 26th, our school nurses are going to receive their second dose of the vaccine, and then we're in the process of planning and coordinating what, what might this look like when we're able to then start bringing the rest of our staff along for having the vaccine. So we've asked people to begin thinking about that, of course, as a personal choice, that people need to consider, but we have both short-term and long-term considerations for how that looks even next year when we start the school year, so we hope people will consider that. So those are the big things happening right now. Our kids are starting a strong third quarter. Sports has gone well, activities have gone well, and we just want to keep things moving along so that we reach the end of the year successfully, and we're appreciative. If people are traveling, of course, we want them to be taking precautions, we want them to be diligent if they are traveling, we want them to be very mindful of monitoring symptoms when they return, and continuing to keep that in mind, so that we keep our eye on the prize with school continuing to the end of the year. I would have any questions that you might want to ask.
Thank you so much for that information. I know that I had asked you this question with winter activities, was it, was it a time to relook at the two tickets versus, you know, what we had in the thing? And I'm happy to report that we have such good attendance, and that we need to space, that we do need to keep it at the two. So we have been, the administration has been considering, you know, looking at changes. If it was, if attendance had been lower, it would maybe open that up and so forth, but it sounds like people are wanting to go to those games.
They are, and if somebody was just at a basketball game Friday night, attendance is really good. And so that's part of that quarterly review of looking at what, what are our protocols for those activities and athletics? And yes, it feels full. I can't imagine what really full gyms are going to feel like next year if we are able to go back to our old way of doing things. It will feel very crowded.
I would just add that I've heard from many parents and teachers and other people to say, yes, it stinks, and it's a sacrifice that we can't all be at the places we want to, but they're just so glad that the activity is actually happening. And so I think if you were to go back and ask any of the seniors from last year, if you could have played with no spectators, or if you could have played with two people, they would have taken, taken you up on that in a heartbeat. And so I think it's a matter of perspective, and we know it's challenging, and that this may be the last season for some of those, you know, senior students that are participating in whatever their activity is, but it really is about, like we said at the beginning of the year, allowing our students to really enjoy that full experience. And I am so grateful for all the online opportunities, the live streaming that we have had improvements in this year to allow people to still participate and still watch and support their student in whatever that is. And so again, the number of people who have just said, yes, it stings, but we're so happy, and our students are so happy that they get to do the activity, I think makes it all, you know, worthwhile.
Yeah, and I know our students are grateful to have had fans, even if it's not a gym full, because it's hard to play with nobody watching you, so we've been really happy about that.
And I would also say the number of friends that I have, even online, whose kids have not set foot in a school building yet this school year, and how frustrated those parents are. And so I'm just so grateful that those that wanted to stay home had the option to do that, and those that really wanted to be in school had the option to do that as well. And I think both parties have been very happy that they've had the option, and, and I know that we have been too, and I think that makes a really big difference in our overall education. We look at all of our summer activities and our summer programming, and, you know, for some kids, they really need that, and that's great that we have an option, but it's also great that they've been able to have that connection with a teacher in person and their staff at their school, too.
Yep, very true.
So we want to maintain that.
Thank you.
I was just gonna, I'm just gonna pretty much say what Carly said. I've got friends and family across the country, mainly the East Coast, and yeah, they're so frustrated with having their kids at home, and, I mean, not having their kids at home, but just not being in the buildings, and they're just amazed at what we've been able to accomplish here in Sioux Falls, even with our numbers. They're always like, you have 24,000 students? I'm like, yes, we have 24,000 students. So I just, I think it's remarkable. Our positivity rates are so low, the, the efforts that everyone has put into keeping our kids safe and our staff safe, it's just been incredible, and I'm just so thankful that we work in a district that has put these protocols in place and supported them, and helped us keep our kids in school. And let's just keep, keep at it, so that we can finish second semester in the buildings.
Yeah, we can't work this hard and then sacrifice it late in the game.
Right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sim. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the Return to Learn update?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same. That is approved. Anything else for the good of the meeting? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.